Do we have any public comments from the public? No. Any public comment from the committee?
Yeah, okay, hi. So, I just wanted to, and I had sent some emails and bring this to the attention of the committee, just to have in the back of their heads. The NCAS scores went home last week, and I am wondering how we're feeling about them going home via backpack express or them being mailed. And I know in the past, in the past couple of years, we've mailed them. I mean, we've sent them home via backpack as a cost savings, I'm assuming. But I did just want to bring to the attention of the committee and whoever else that, you know, in this time where we're not focusing all of our attention on what is on that piece of paper, what the NCAS score is, and we're really striving to make sure that we have kids who understand that they are more than just a score. And we also are focusing on the anxiety or well-being of students. I'm wondering if we can look at that again and think about how maybe some kids, it's fine, they're not opening the scores on the bus, or they're not reading the scores, but some kids might be doing that. And I just want us to think about if that's something that is important to us, to keep to the parents, to make the decision of whether or not to show those scores to 4th graders, you know, 5th graders, these are young kids, 8 and 9 years old, or if it is fine to continue to send them home via backpack, just a conversation that I wanted to bring up.
Ben? Did your child open theirs?
My child did not open them. She happens to be a rule follower, but I know that there are some kids who did open them on the bus and were comparing scores.
On the bus they were?
Hmm?
That were on the bus?
Yeah. So...
That's typical.
It is. And I understand that, you know, it was, it is a cost-saving measure to not have to mail those things home, but I just want us to make sure that we're not mailing them home for the, not just that, that we're, that we're okay sending them home in the backpacks with the idea that kids are gonna open them up and see, especially with the change in the scoring of the NCAS, that this, there was a shift in the score. So even if you got scores that typically would've met in the normal range, you might've been below, you know, partially meeting, so it needs improvement. I just wanna continue to keep kids thinking positively about what their job here is.
Well, parents did get the call home looking for it, so they could look for it.
Correct. There's a long time between dismissal and home.
Oh, I just... That's right.
Right. Yep. I just, it's just my job to sort of bring those things to everybody's attention.
Did you hear complaints from parents, though?
No. I didn't hear any complaints. I just wanna make sure that...
Okay.
That's why we're... And my other, my other child, who, I got it in the mail. So I got to determine whether or not, in that moment, I could, I shared it with her or not, because...
What was the gr...
Oh, okay. Do you know what I'm saying?
Like, there's school...
The other school my child's at, I received that in the mail, and I liked being able to decide if it was important enough to share or not. And I like having that decision as a parent. My other child, I didn't feel like I had that decision because she was like, "Do you know my scores? Can I open them?" And then I, then that leads us to a whole nother conversation about, "Well, it's just a school," you know, that kind of stuff, so... Maybe it's not on anyone else's radar. I don't know if it's on anybody else's radar, so I thought I'd bring it.
No, thank you. No, I just wanted to make sure you didn't hear complaints.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and now we're on to, no one other, no other public comment down there? No? Good. Okay. So now we're on to the chaired report, and I'm going to take a moment to welcome and acknowledge our high school junior, Emily Nash. She's back there. Emily made national news a few weeks ago with her win in the Central Mass Division III Boys Golf Tournament. And I first and foremost would like to acknowledge and congratulate Emily on her performance on the links, as well as her exemplary sportsmanship, character, and grace under pressure. We would also like to make certain to the Lunaber community that the district fully supports Emily, and that the school committee has petitioned the MIAA to make the necessary changes to guarantee that this situation is not repeated in the future. The district recently moved towards an athletic advisory committee in order to ensure that stakeholders around athletics could come together to address important matters, including Title IX issues in our athletic program. The district views this committee as essential for the flow of information regarding resources and the needs of the student-athlete. We also see it as a way to distribute information about the athletic program, including the need to comply with Title IX. In order to address and respond to questions that have been raised about our Title IX compliance, we are taking the opportunity to do a self-assessment of current programs, students' interests, and abilities. Superintendent Combs, our athletic director, Pete McCollough, and the high school principal, Brian Spadapino, are working with our legal counsel to complete an assessment, and the results will be shared with this committee to help inform our actions going forward. Again, I would like to take a moment to congratulate Emily, so if you can come up here. Emily, we have a little something for you. You have proved that you are going to be a great success in the future.
I'm gonna let the chair present this to you.
This is for you, and you have handled yourself so maturely, and we appreciate it as a school.
Thank you, Emily.
You're a great representative. And the girls' tournament.
Congratulations.
Thank you again, Emily.
Thank you.
Emily, would you like to introduce your parents and your brother?
I think they helped out with the...
I think so. Kindness.
Well, that's my mom, Carrie, and my dad, Bob, and my brother Robbie.
And Emily, being the humble champion that she is, I just want to let the community and the rest of the committee know that tomorrow she'll be honored by the MIAA and recognized in front of about 1,400 student-athlete ambassadors at Gillette Stadium. And I know that that'll be a special moment for her. And then she's off to Florida for a golf tournament, so good luck with both of those.
Is that gonna be on the Golf Channel?
It's the AJGA, which is American Junior Golf Association Invitational Tournament, so I just got invited last week, I think.
That's so awesome. Excellent. Well, good luck with that.
Enjoy. Is it gonna be warm weather down there? And we know there's a lot going on and a lot of homework perhaps waiting for you, so whenever you need to slip out, please do so. And thank you again for being here. And Emily, thank you for bringing such pride to our community. Now to the chaired report. Any line items report? Do you want to do the warrants and line item transfers?
Oh, we have to do the warrants, yes.
So the warrants are on the table for signature.
They're way down there.
I adopt the press.
Okay. Do we have line item transfer?
We do have some line item...
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Bye tomorrow.
Take care. We do have line item transfer. This is one of those transfers that we do every fall. It's taken, and we're pretty far into the fall, but as you know, we had a switch over of retirement in our business office, and Mr. Cassidy is here to present this. So do you want to talk about this line item transfer, Mr. Cassidy?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. What you have in front of you is a proposed transfer.
I think it's in your packets over here.
Yep, we have. Yep, got it.
So the proverbial hiring just has settled, and we've got, we've got people in the accounts that they need to be in. As soon as I started in the district about five and a half, about five weeks ago, I launched into reviewing the personnel line item, line item accounts and did an audit to reconcile the personal budget line item accounts, which are right in front of you. So these proposed transfers in front of you will take care of a few things. It'll address some of the transfers and the reassignments that happened over the summer. And when that happens, that, that's basically different salary hitting different line items and different accounts, which will, which will affect overages and deficits. We're also taking a look at allocating salaries properly. So part of, part of my salary is the HR director and also the business manager, so we're appropriating some of those accounts. Our ELL teachers are gonna be pulled out of the account that they've been hitting over the last couple of years, so we can appropriately address or account for those funds on our state-level reports. And then some of these, some of these transfers addressing some underfunded accounts as, as we moved into the school year. So my notes are very vague. It's not intentional or trying to, trying to do anything sneaky. It's trying to get all the transfers on one page. But I would, I would like to open, open the discussion up to any questions that you might have on any specific transfers that are in front of you.
What is, let's see, it's the, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1 down. It's talking about the increase reflects Title 1 reduction, 50% local funds for positions. Wait, what is that? Do we get less Title 1 funds this year?
So when the budget is developed, we really don't know what some of our federal funding entitlements will be. Our Title 1 budget was reduced, and we, to accommodate for that reduction, we had one employee funded local, half locally and had one half through the grant. So at the time of the budget, we didn't know that, so we're trying to, to get local funds into the specific account to cover that. Also, can I just say, you have another question, that 109 is not the 50%. What we're also doing is moving, so it's, it's an ELL teacher and...
Two ELL.
Two ELL teachers. So one, one is funded locally, and one is funded half locally and half Title 1. So that's, that's the whole, that's the 109,000. It's not, it's not one position.
Okay, so when the reduction in that line below it moved ELL teacher to new account, that would be the new account?
Yes.
Okay.
Question, third, third item from the bottom. What, what precipitated that change? That's a significant change.
Speaking of the special ed transportation...
Athletic director.
From the bottom.
Athletic director.
Oh, the athletic director. Loxie, did you want to talk about the history of the creation of that position? And from my understanding is that we created an athletic director position, and we're allocating, so it's having its...
Well, I think the coaches, that's not just the athletic director, that must be the coaches and athletic director.
Oh, the total line?
Yeah.
Yes, it's the coaches and the athletic director. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were...
No, I, I...
It may be one mission.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Yeah, and I, that just shows the allocation of the salary there, but that is coaches that are also in that.
Yes, yes.
Well, there's a significant change in it, so I, and I'm thinking it was one position that I mean.
Absolutely. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want that job.
I have a question about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 7 and 8. The middle school principal, assistant principal, and the high school principal, assistant principal. Do both, they both say that the increase reflects the dean of students allocation?
Yes.
So in that sort of high, middle school principal slash assistant principal, then slash dean of students would be included in that?
So that bears some, some explanation. So at the, at the middle school level, what we've, we do have a dean of students, which is a teacher...
Right.
Who gets, does get a stipend.
Correct.
And she does have a, a reduction in her teaching schedule.
Yep.
So we're applying some of her teaching salary to this account as well, to appropriately charge her duties and represent it for our reporting purposes.
Okay.
So it's the 5,000, it's, it's approximately 26,000 for her teaching salary, which is what we're putting into that account. And then there's also, there's an adjustment for the assistant principal for his salary.
Okay. And then what about the high school? Yeah, what about the high school?
So the high school. These are good questions.
Thank you.
So getting back to the athletic director, so half of his salary you'll see is reflected in the coaching account, and the other half, he is the dean of students for the high school, we are appropriating his, half of his salary to that account as well.
Okay. But more than that stipended, okay?
It's half of the, yes. There's no stipend associated with that account.
Half of dean, okay. Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So each of those lines ended up having the principal, the half assistant principal. The assistant principal is...
Our dean.
And then the deans are, the AD is high school dean, and then we have the middle school dean.
Okay, I just, I figured that it would make sense if there was like, so slash dean is also added to that line. Which totally makes sense to me. I just didn't catch it when we went through. So the high school dean of students, what, is it halftime? Yeah. I know who it is. It's a halftime. Is he spending half of his time as dean of students?
I think that's, that's how we put it here, and they're collecting that information to make sure that it will be adequately represented. You know, that's, that's kind of how we proposed it and said, half dean, half AD.
Okay.
And so I've asked the Mr. McCollough, as well as Principal Spadapino, to basically track that.
Okay.
So as we do the next budget developments, we have clear indications of what that allocation is in, in reality.
Yes.
We have it in theory, but is that matching reality?
And...
And I think you need to see that over the course of the year, because I think there's the, the different seasons place different demands on the dean.
Yep.
So that's why we'll track it over time, and by the end of this first year, I think we should have a better idea of what, what that allocation actually is.
And I think that Superintendent Combs, you had said that we would get that report of that new position when Mr. Spadapino came to do up his budget anyway, so he can give us some input on, you know, how that new position is going and how it compares to the middle school.
I don't know if he can tell you how it compares to the middle school, but Mr. Sancry will be here and talk about that dean position as well.
Right, and then that's, we can make the comparison.
Right.
Leave it to us.
But dean of students in two different buildings with two different age groups could predicate completely different responsibility.
Responsibility.
So I would think it's looking at each individual position and the breakdown of their responsibilities.
And how they're managing that.
Yes.
I did have one. We have four different line items for the overtime of custodians. They were underfunded expenses, so we didn't have anything in the past for them, and I'm not sure how to word my question. Why do we have overtime for, why do they need to have overtime? They aren't able to accomplish what they need during that?
Oh, the custodian?
Yeah. And we ran out of building.
Annually, there, there is, there's a small pocket of money that's used to cover overtime. So it, it could be for snowstorms, that's generally the, from what I've seen in doing my research. And then just covering from the add-out if, if there's, if someone is out, has to be called in, or if there's, or if just a general building issue and we need a response.
Okay, that makes sense.
One of the interesting things about having new eyes on the budget is, I look back, because I was surprised by this, because when we have our actuals at the end of the year, we always have overtime showing and being expended out of those lines for the reasons that Mr. Cassidy talked about. And yet, when we're budgeting, we've never budgeted the overtime into those lines.
Something that regularly occurs.
Right, exactly. So when, when we investigated that, it was sort of like, well, why haven't we done that? So Mr. Cassidy has relied on past history, as well as some projections just based upon some of the changes that we've seen even since the first of the fiscal year, July 1. We've had some changes that have required some, some overtime for folks because we've been short on staff for a variety of reasons.
This paraprofessional, high school paraprofessional who does any support for student advisory? What, student advisory, just the advisory?
It's the advisory. Since the inception of advisory, there's been a, someone assigned to cover advisor, to cover studies, so teachers can do advisory, okay? And in order to do that, they've been hiring temporary personnel in for several years now, and those positions were finally listed into the budget. So they had substitutes, basically, that had worked throughout that time period. Sometimes I think it was the nature of who was doing the substituting, because we had a former coach who came in regularly, regularly would be every day, all day long, to do those studies, for the, to cover the studies, so the teachers would have the time available to do the advisories. And now that's placed into the budget, before they were showing up in substitute lines.
Advisory only one period a day?
It is, but to have the, teachers be able to do the advisories, the cost of that is, is basically having these folks full-time every day. Mr. Spadapino can go through the mystery of the school...
Advisory?
Well, not so much advisory, but just how, the interplay with how the schedule works.
Okay.
That, that's how it plays, in terms of relieving teachers from that particular duty in order for them, then to do advisory twice a week.
And he'll be here next week?
He will.
Yep. You guys good? Good? Anybody, Jim, got anything?
I don't have anything to ask, but I had...
Okay. Are you good? Okay. All right, so...
So none of these changes the bottom line in terms of the budget is still budgeted?
Right, absolutely.
But it does make explicit of how the dollars are being expended, and puts them in the DESE funding codes appropriately as well, correct?
It'll help us move forward setting next year's budget in the next month or so. Can't wait that. So the line items will be more in sync when we present it to you.
Okay.
So I added the slash dean on this.
Oh, yeah.
So we, yeah. You can take a vote, but everyone still needs to sign off on this.
Right, right.
Depending on how you want to do that.
So...
And I also put AD, our coaches line, because that number does include that, as we pointed out. So I wrote in those changes on that particular form.
Okay, so I'll take a motion to approve them, and then we all have to sign it.
I make a motion that we approve the line item transfers as requested.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm gonna pass this down.
Thank you.
And then we have minutes?
We have one other.
Oh, that.
We have the year-in, annual year-in report for FY '17 that was prepared by Ms. Cooper, working in conjunction with Karen Broschew, the town financial director. And this has a lot of backup. I did not file the notebook over tonight. Yes, it is literally that big, and this is what the auditor comes in and, and does the audit review on. But I have signed off of it as of October 31st. The school committee chair is also required to sign, and so I passed out this document to you at the last meeting, so you'd have some time to review it. We provided the Schedule 19 backup from the town that Ms. Broschew provided last week. And at this point in time, I'm asking if you will authorize the school committee chair, and recommending that you authorize the school committee chair to sign off on this report, as reflecting our...
I make the motion that we authorize the school...
I did have a question, though. There are a couple of spots on here where we're supposed to check one or the other, and neither are checked.
Okay.
Is it required that they're, are checked?
I would assume if it needs to check, it should be checked off, so where's pages?
Unfortunately, the paging, page numbering is not very good, but Schedule 2, page 3 of 3.
Yeah, can.
12, page 12 in.
Is it just because our...
Well, this asks for an assessment method used for fiscal year '17. That's true.
There's more than one.
There are more than...
Oh, check 1.
Yeah, there's more than one here.
Do these the assessment? Is that on Schedule 2?
It doesn't, it doesn't imply because we're not a regional school district. That's the only, if we're, if you were a board of a regional school district, we would have to assign...
That for regional...
Yeah, because we share, or we would share.
All right. And then from the back, I guess, the fourth page from the end.
Talking back. That checkbox again, Mr. Lovett?
Yeah, there's another, the, did your district use per pupil administrative cost average? Yes or no?
We used actuals, not per pupil.
We'll check off now.
That's what's checked.
Yep. Oh, is yours checked out?
Right here it is.
Oh, but there's, there's what I said.
That is checked.
First, he just got out, but he just got details.
And I can sport, I have another one. And that's regional, so that one doesn't matter. Okay. That was the only question I had.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, now I should take a motion.
I know, but I forgot my wording.
Okay. I make the motion that we authorize the school committee chair to sign this.
End of year.
End of year certified statement.
Second.
All?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everybody, if you get out of here soon enough, for the wrap there. But I also wanted to let everyone know that on Monday evening at 6:00 is the National Honor Society induction program. I believe we have 40 students that are being inducted, and we'd invite you all to join us here at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. It's always a beautiful ceremony. It's one of the highlights of the year. So if you have time, come out that evening and join us. Our congratulations to all the students who are going to be inducted. Congratulations to everyone for completing the first quarter of the school year. It seems interesting to be already at that point, the first 45 days of fall vibe, certainly. I think we're having lots of banquets and celebrations around the end of a very productive and exciting fall sports season, and everybody's getting ready for these next months of really focusing on the studies and, and all the activities that are coming up. I know signups are going on right now, and I should stop now so our students. But just really appreciate everything that folks have done, and parents that came out for parent conferences. I just once, once again, remind parents that anytime they feel they need a conference with a teacher, they just need to reach out to the teacher and, and set those up. That the partnership between parents and the schools is critical to successful student learning, so we welcome that opportunity at any time. That's it? Short, sweet, good. Maybe go to the, the one, the one, do you have a report for us?
Yes. So as Superintendent Combs was saying, we have successfully completed the first term and transitioned into a second. We've wrapped up all fall sports except for the last football Thanksgiving game, which will be on Wednesday at 6:00 PM versus Quabon. So, yeah, we've finished all the fall crazy homecoming hustle and bustle, but student council and the school itself is still really busy with a bunch of different activities. So next week, we have Thanksgiving break with an early release on Wednesday. On Tuesday, we're going to have the Powderpuff game. It was rescheduled, it was supposed to be tonight. So we have the student council versus faculty game at 6:00 PM, and the juniors versus seniors game at 7:00 PM. And then admissions, I believe it's $3, and then you're also required a canned good to raise the food for the Thanksgiving baskets. In addition, the class of 2019 is still continuing their clothes drive that started November 1st and then goes until December 5th. And that, I just want to extend a thank you to the community, because that has been going beyond imagined. We already have an entire room, and the TCP filled, the whole floor. We're getting calls every single day from all three of the schools, saying that they have loads and loads of clothes that need to be picked up. So it's awesome that we're able to do such a good fundraiser that will raise money for the class, as well as raise money and collect a bunch of clothes for the epilepsy foundation. And then also, the student council is participating in the, in Lunenburg's 10th Annual Gift Mart. It's held in mid-December through the Lunenburg Food Pantry, the high, or the, all the Lunenburg schools and the local churches. So we're asking for help by sending unwrapped gifts for children and adults to schools by December 4th, and then boxes will be collected at all three of the schools. Superintendent Combs mentioned the NHS induction, again, that will be on Monday night. And then, lastly, the Christmas tree lighting will be held November 30th at the gazebo, at the gazebo. It's held by the student council, and it's a great way for the community to come together. And then I also wanted to thank the community and the school committee for their help with my coloring for cancer project. We've finished collecting all of our donations, and we're very successful with that. I want to thank the Lions Club and also just members of the community for donating not only coloring supplies, but also making donations towards our funds to actually print the books. So hopefully, the books and everything will be distributed as predicted in, during the holidays. So, thank you.
What time is the tree lighting ceremony, Jim?
I think at 6:00.
Are you having hot cocoa?
Yeah. The student council provides all the snacks.
Yeah, where, at TCP?
No, it's going to be right at the gazebo.
Oh, at the gazebo.
Yep.
I think the band starts laying about 5:45.
Okay.
We're hoping for good weather.
Okay.
Don't say that on TV.
Park it, Jim. Park it, Jim.
No, everybody's got a parka gym.
So we're going to go to the third reading of our 5104, 5.04 school calendar policy. Have we had any comments?
We've not received any feedback.
Nothing?
Nothing.
So would we accept it today, or would we wait till the next one? You can approve it. We can approve it today. I will take a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the policy 5105.04, the school calendar.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business. Initial approval of the School Council Convention 2018, is that Ms. Garrett?
Thank you for having me. John Garrett, student council advisor at the high school. In the past, we've been able to go to the Massachusetts State Conference for Student Council. And the last couple of years, we haven't really taken anybody because of the money issues. And so we've got some interest this year again, enough interest, and real interest, that I said, all right, I got to come to see you guys and see if I can continue with this process, and maybe get us signed up and get us to go again. So it's a state conference. It happens in Hyannis on the Cape, March 7th, 8th, and 9th. So questions that Ms. Combs had, Superintendent Combs had asked me, because I wasn't going to be here, because I was going to be at Powderpuff, so I kind of outlined that. So, you know, the cost of it is, the biggest issue is transportation at this point. And so we have four students that want to go. My junior president, Chris Tobin. The secretary and senior, Sophie Shapiro, she's wanted to go for the last couple of years, but had to pull it off, because there hasn't even been enough kids to go, that money in the end is a big problem. We have a sophomore, Claire Delaney, and a freshman, Kyle Wies, that wants to go. Yeah. So it's a nice little mix of kids, and so.
That's great.
Yeah. And so, you know, someone like Sophie, who's been trying to go, but either there's not enough kids that we can go down, make it worth a trip, or, you know, typically, it's a money issue that brings the kids back to it. So how do we get there is a big twist here in sort of an idea, where there is only four kids. I have a minivan, I have the proper coverage. Typically, take it down anyways. In the past, what we've done is set the kids down on the bus with either Leominster, Oakmont, slash North Little Sex has opened their bus to us, but at a cost of like $800, to take these kids down. So the, with four kids going, I said, you know, we can fit this in my minivan. I do have the proper coverage, I'm willing to do it. I like to have the van down there anyways, because we stay at the offsite hotel. There's two hotels, one where all the big conference happens. The second offsite hotel is for the overflow, just because there's so many kids, like 1,400 kids, I think, that go down there, 1,400 people, over 1,000 kids that go down there every year. So if I could take the van, the cost of the trip for the kids would be $300. And if we have to put them on the bus, the cost of the trip goes up to like $450. In both cases, the student council is absorbing some of the cost, because it's just so important to get these kids down there. I know, I feel a difference in the council, when they come home from this event, the spirit, the ideas, the speakers that we see are just inspiring, and they just, with the whole fire, and just a different perspective. They get to talk to so many other kids and other councils as well. They go to mini-conferences, plus we have big giant ones with phenomenal speakers, and it's really a great opportunity. And it does, it just keeps our council fresh with new ideas and spirit, for sure. So I would love to be able to take at least these four kids down, hopefully they, when we give them the ticket price. They knew the range of the price, and the problem is, is it always comes in in December, so it's a tough time. Yeah, yeah.
Question, does this include most of their meals?
Everything.
Oh.
Everything. We leave late morning, we get down there, we start to have lunch, and then we check into the hotel, they have this big crazy welcome time, they actually do this polar plunge, they do, they do a fundraiser. We haven't done that, it's kind of a, a new thing since we haven't been going. But talking to the NM, student council advisor, she's like, you got to do it, it's fantastic, it's, you know, crazy, crazy experience. And then it starts right there, and they get all their meals supplied, and the busing from, so if I take my van down there, that would only be for me and the other adult would be coming. The kids would not go back and forth, because they have busing for the kids to go from the hotel in the morning. They basically lock them in there for the day, and then take them back at like, I think at dinnertime, they can, after dinner, they can go back and change. They have a dance, they have different events that happen at the, in the evenings, and so they take them back to the hotel, and then they would bring them back. So I would be taking them in my van beyond just two and five.
Down there and come back.
Yeah, yeah.
So you leave Wednesday morning and come back Friday night?
Well, no, Friday, Friday is school time.
Oh, right.
Yeah, they have a morning meeting at the end of the conference. They announce the state positions, because we get to vote for the state, all the kids that run the state council. Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty cool process, to see, you know, to what we go through. And like I said, the speakers, we've actually brought two of the speakers back here, because the kids thought, the kids thought they were just done, like, so. And I think the benefits, I mean, that's, we've kind of already talked about all those, but. Have any questions for me?
You mentioned that student council would be picking up part of the cost. Do you have an estimate?
If we go with the van, I believe it was around 850, and then if we do, we have to take the bus, it's like 1,200. We just try to like ballpark a reasonable number that, you know, 300, 450, kind of rounded it, and then figured out the rest of it.
So 300 would be with what the student council absorbed?
$300 would be, yeah.
Their cost?
For three days.
Right.
Housing, food, transportation, rooms, everything.
So when you said that some of the cost was absorbed, it was, you know, that's included the portion that.
Right. I mean, the two costs for the kids to probably go would be like $425, $450-ish.
Got it, got it, got it.
With, with me taking the van down? And then if I have to add the cost of that plus the bus, then it would be 500, 600, we'd have to get it. So that's why we always, as a council, try to pull it back a little bit, try to, you know, contribute some of the money to it.
No, I think it's good.
And I haven't had a speeding ticket in a very, very long.
Yeah, I need a motion. But wait, would you, do you want?
I just wanted, you know, this is a very beneficial opportunity for the students, and I really appreciate Ms. Garrett's willingness to drive down in the van. That still requires the parent permission. We do have policy that permits this, and as Ms. Garrett said, it requires some additional coverage on their vehicle and the parent permission as well. I wish there were a way that this could be fully funded by the district, because this is our student leadership. And, and for parents and the students to have to absorb even that amount of money is, is concerning, I guess. Especially when it means a lot of years we don't have the opportunity to take the students.
Well, back in the day, when we first, when I first started in, as a student council advisor, I don't know how many years ago now, we used to have students write a letter of reasons why they needed to go, or they wanted to go, and we'd have to pick from 20-plus letters and choose 12 kids to go. And over the years, it, we just, the kids just know, they can't ask their parents. I did ask North Little Sex what they charged the kids, and it was like $425 to go on the bus. I asked what Oakmont paid, because they go together, and she said Oakmont's fully funded.
Fully funded.
So they take the 12 kids that they're allowed to take, fully paid for.
Wow. So my recommendation is that we approve this, but my other recommendation is that we see if we can look for some additional funding to help support the students in attending. I'm thinking that last meeting, we received some donations around two other trips, and I'm wondering to myself, why we haven't perhaps used some of those funds to help support this particular trip of the high school students? Because we have elementary going to Nature's Classroom, we have the DC trip for the middle school, and perhaps this might be something for us to consider in terms of how those funds get allocated going forward in terms of helping with that. I'd also like for us to reach out to organizations in the community and see if there's ways that we can, we have the Lions Club to meet, reach out to us at the beginning of the school year, saying what are some of the needs? And this seems like one that perhaps we can reach out to the Lions Club yet again, because I know they've been very generous to us. And see if there's some assistance that can be given there. Or we reconsider how we distributed the funds from the Connaught Rens Foundation to, that was $2,500 donation, I believe is what it was.
Also, perhaps, you know, some of our other local businesses, Walmart, Manhattan, they're often generous with us. Walmart does grant, I mean, it would require a little research on that on our part. It'd be something I would be willing to help with in terms of research. But that might be able to get, you know, even if it can't get fully funded, you know, a chunk of it down to make what the school could then put in the rest, or even reducing, you know, more what.
How many students would we be allowed to train?
12.
12 in the district?
And, and, you know, I think one of the hardest parts, I mean, obviously, the kids asking their parents for money is a huge difficulty for the kids.
Well, especially at the summer.
Yeah, exactly. But they also are missing three days of school. So the kids are really committed that want to go to this. They know it's painful to miss three days of school.
Oh, yeah, especially in high school.
And these kids, you know, they'll go off to the dance safe a little bit, and sometimes they come back and doing some homework. I mean, they've been down there doing homework at times, and, you know, downtime, when, when other kids might be swimming in the pool and doing lots of stuff. So these kids know the work is involved.
So we know the financially worst-case scenario, if I can refer to it that way, and it could get better. This approval is just for the initial approval to start moving forward with actually engaging the, the students. And I think our policy calls for four weeks before the trip to come back for final approval. So we'll all work together to see if we can assist with, with that. You probably need to make some reservations.
Yeah, the dates need to happen a little bit before. It's mid-January that I have to have. Well, it opens January 1st and closes February 1st, and so I put the mid-January, trying to give parents maybe a little bit more time to come up with money. If we know, if we know.
Now I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve initial.
I want to make sure I'm abstaining from. Yes, I know. I figured that.
Make a motion for initial approval of the Student Council Convention 2018 with attendance by our students as outlined by.
Second. In favor, I'll, I'm abstaining. Call them.
Thank you.
You all set, Ms. Finch? Okay. I just asked you if you needed technology.
Oh, no. Walk out the door, you'll.
Yes, y'all.
Oh, she's jumped right up there.
Yep, she's ready.
Ready.
Mr. Brokow, while Ms. Finch moves into position here, I just wanted to introduce Galen Overman, who's with us. And Ms. Overman is a guidance counselor over at Turkey Hill Elementary School, but she is also doing an internship, and part of principal or administrative internship requires some familiarity with.
Yes, yell.
She's jumped right up there.
Yep, she's ready.
Mr. Rocco, while Ms. Finch moves into position here, I just wanted to introduce Galen Klement, who's with us. And Ms. Overman is a guidance counselor over at Turkey Hill Elementary School. But she is also doing an internship. And part of principal or administrative internship requires some familiarity with budgets and school budgets and how that works. And so I have the opportunity to work with Ms. Overman on that. And so I said, great, come to all these meetings. She was thrilled. Here she is. I was so thrilled to sit at those meetings.
Great to be here. Thank you very much for inviting me. Appreciate it.
And we have Carolyn Finch, who's our Fortunateer, nursing services for the district. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you also for having me. So the purpose of me being here tonight is to talk about two things. One, of course, my question is... Okay. There we go. So the purpose of the presentation is twofold. One is to present the school health services budget. And secondly, to talk a little bit about some of the district data that goes on in the health offices. We'll start with the budget. And I know everybody has seen a copy and has a copy of this very complicated, very complicated...
This is my favorite. This is my favorite budget. I'm gonna say it. I'm gonna say it. It's my favorite budget. It never changes.
It never changes. I've never had to ask for another penny more. It never changes. It's all of three lines. The first one being our school physician, who continues to be Dr. Michael Lyons. The second is all of our health office supplies. And then the third and final line of the big budget is one subscription to the National Association of School Nurses. And we share that one subscription with journals and different things that come from that. And we share that monthly. And that, those dues are not expected to rise either. So once again, we don't have to offer any more money in our budget. And again, one of the main reasons that, why we're able to do that is because of Mylan's EpiPen for Schools program that we're able to get a huge savings from. Because as everybody knows, the price of EpiPens has skyrocketed. I looked it up, and in 2007, it cost ninety-four dollars for a pen. And then ten years later, 2017, it's over seven hundred and fifty dollars for a pen. So they must feel that in order to compensate for that, so they can sleep at night, they offer these free EpiPens to schools everywhere.
Yeah, it has to be one of those.
It's gotta be. So, and that's great because we can take advantage of that. And it's a huge savings for us in the district. And why is it important that we have EpiPens that are not attached to a student? It's attached to a building. The reason for that is because one in five anaphylactic reactions are occurring in people that don't even know that they ever had that allergy. So it's so important for the safety of our schools that in each school, we have a pen, but we also have a nurse in every school that recognizes the symptoms of a severe allergic reaction that's becoming anaphylactic, which is truly life-threatening and needs epinephrine in order to stabilize. So this is all obviously very important. The other reason is that we also continue to be a partner school of the Essential School Health Services Grant, along with the Ashburnham Westminster District. A requirement of the grant is that I submit monthly data to the D P H, and that I must attend the regional nurse leader meetings. And then by doing so, I were able to get three thousand dollars a year from the grant. So that's obviously another big reason why. That's it for the budget. Any questions about this very ball budget?
Bravo.
Okay, great. So we're gonna move right on to the health services data. And I just want to start with what we traditionally do is look at the data of comparing the last two years and looking at these three specific things. The health office visits, the medication administrations in the middle, and then the last things of the mandated screenings that we do every year. So as you can see here, we have an increase in visits in the health office, and we have an increase in medication administration. And what I think is kind of significant about this is that the increase in enrollment between these two years was almost nonexistent. It was less than twenty students. Yet, we're seeing a huge bump in visits to the health office and med administrations. So this is some straightforward data about what goes on in our health offices. But it's all well and good to look at that data. But I don't think honestly that that's a good reflection of everything that we do. I think there's a lot of things that we do in the health offices that aren't obvious. It's not that whole picture. We have a goal in the health services, and that is to have as many students as possible present in school, in the classroom, and ready to learn. We take our goal very seriously. We manage all students' safety, their health and wellness every day, every student, one at a time. We're definitely seeing an increase in the medical complexity of all these students that we're managing in our districts. The numbers of things that we're seeing in our schools today are very different than what we saw even five years ago, let alone if you think back to when we were in school, hate to say. But the complexity of the conditions that we are seeing are changing. I'm not gonna talk about each one of them. I'm only gonna talk about two things on this slide. That's why I highlighted them, so I wouldn't forget the two things I wanted to mention. One of them that I want to mention is that despite all of these conditions and these medical complexities that we're seeing in our students, these students are in the classroom, not in our offices, not at home. We're able to get them here to school and into the classroom. That's a big goal of ours. And I think that we do a great job of accomplishing that. The only other thing I wanted to say about these is that huge rise in the students with mental health issues. Huge rise. And I think that's why you see the bump in health office visits and med administrations despite the bump in enrollment. I think that's one of the big reasons why. The other thing I want to say about that is it's not as straightforward as you might think, although maybe you do. These students don't come walking into the health office and say, oh, I'm here because I am so anxious. I had practice yesterday after school. It was a tough practice because it's a big game. I feel a lot of pressure for that. By the time I got home, I did my homework. I had so much homework. I had a test I had to study for. It was after midnight by the time I finished all that. And then my phone lit up with all this drama about the girls talking about this one and that one. And now I'm all worked up and I can barely sleep. And then this morning, I come to school, and now I have that test next period, and I just don't feel, I just don't feel ready. Unfortunately, they don't come through the door and say that. Unfortunately, they come through the door and say, you know what, I just don't feel good. I really have, I have a stomach ache. I don't know why. I just don't feel good. So those visits are happening on a regular basis, and the nurses are very aware of that. They're aware of what types of questions to have, what conversations to have with students about that. So, oops, jumped aside. What else are we doing that's not an obvious thing in the health offices? There's a lot of things that we're doing, providing comprehensive care. And I'm not gonna talk about all the different things that we do, but I am gonna talk about one or two things. One of the things I want to mention is just managing the students with concussions. Because again, I think that we see, we are seeing a very large number of increased use of concussions. See, we're getting good use of the money of our national journals. Here's a feature article about concussions. I don't think that we're seeing increased concussions in the health offices because kids are getting concussed more. I think through all the awareness and education around concussions, they're getting diagnosed more. And that's a good thing. And along with the education that they're learning about concussions, they're learning the importance of how to treat them. And it was, for a while, so important that they had a gradual return to play, to get back in the game. But what they've also learned with their education is that it's as important, if not more important, that they have a gradual return to learn in the classroom. And that's what the nurse is doing with each of these students that have diagnosed concussion. They monitor, they communicate with the teachers, the parents, the student, the provider, and make sure that there's an individual plan for each one of those students all throughout their concussion until they're cleared and able to be back in the classroom. And that journals are helpful with things like that. Here's a great article about how to help those kids with the return to learn. I mean, these students don't look any different sitting in the classroom. So it's not always apparent to the teacher that there's an issue with a student who's in the classroom still having some symptoms from concussion. So it's important that there's somebody that's coordinating that. The only other thing I wanted to say about the concussions was I wanted to thank the P T O because, as you are probably aware, we were able to get the benefits of the Cantu Concussion Clinic that had a grant that we were not able to qualify for at the school. But through the P T O, because it was nonprofit, we were able to take the benefits of that grant, which provides free baseline screening for as many students as would like to have that. So we were able to coordinate that. We had them come two days in October for high school students. They're coming back at the end of November to do middle school students. And hopefully, we'll be able to coordinate that moving forward each year, depending on how the grant goes. The other thing that the school nurses are doing that's maybe not so obvious is managing all the return to school for students that have been out for illness, that they've been out and had mono for ten days, for instance, or an injury, like an injury when you've broken both wrists and you come to school with two casted wrists. That requires a little bit of planning. Or any hospitalizations when they've been out. And that includes mental health hospitalizations. When they come back to school, it's the nurse that coordinates that reentry to hopefully make that a better transition. The nurse also attends the 504 meetings for individual students. But they also attend the student support meetings. And they're a part of a team that looks at prevention for students on a regular basis. They meet on a regular basis for students that would perhaps be falling through the cracks and under the radar for not being successful, these students that are at risk, whether it be because of attendance or because of their grades. So the nurse is an important part of that team as well. They also attend Wellness Advisory Committee and work closely with that group. They're involved, of course, with emergency preparedness. And that also includes our A E Ds that we have in each one of our schools. And making sure that there's enough staff in each building that are trained for C P R and use of the A E D as well. Also, lastly, they provide classroom teachers with the most important information to ensure that there's a safe and healthy environment for all. They're that person that provides that information to the teachers. Did I mention our goal? Students in the classroom and ready to learn. The school nurses in Massachusetts were able to facilitate a return to class rate of ninety-three point one percent, which is excellent. However, Middleburg Public Schools nurses' return to class rate is ninety-three point six percent, which is even better. And then the very last thing I want to say is I wanted to share that the nurses recognize the unique perspective that we have in a relationship that we have with these students. We're not a provider that they only see once a year for their physical or only when they're sick. We are lucky enough to have a long-term relationship with students from kindergarten to graduation, where we can have continuing conversations with them about making good choices and achieving the ultimate goal, which is lifelong health and fitness. And that's a important goal for us too. Thank you for your attention and your continued support. Any question?
I have a question. So a student comes to the office and they're complaining of that stomach ache that's probably not just a stomach ache, more an anxiety or something. How are the parents notified that students come in for a short visit where it's not fever or vomiting, that, you know, that's clear to contact the parents, but for things like that? How are the parents notified? And is there guidance follow-up for things like that?
I think that that's done on an individual basis, depending on the student and how severe or how often those types of visits are happening. Again, this is another example of how we try to foster the independence in the student to suggest to them that they have conversations with the parent. I mean, when they're going through situations like that, I think it's helpful to help coach them around how to have a conversation with their parent about this. Like, have you shared this with your parent? And if they're not comfortable with that, then I think we would offer to do that along with them. Because I think that you don't want to just fix it for them. I think they have to learn how to manage that in conversations with their teachers or with their parents. You know what I mean? We help them, but I don't, but we don't do it all for them.
Right. I didn't know where your, I don't know, like confidentiality with the student, relationship with the student. Do you then step out to the counselor and say, I think the student is having more than typical anxiety? Bring them in on that conversation to follow with the student?
It would depend on how severe the situation was. I mean, we do utilize our resource with our school counselors and our social workers in our schools, for sure. We work together as a team for things like that, yeah. Does that answer that?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Maladino sits here to talk about our technology. Present an update or a recommended budget?
Several.
Or several updates, as the case may be.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to provide an update on technology and to present a proposed budget for next fiscal year. I'd like to take a little bit of time to talk about how our infrastructure has changed over the past couple of years, and then highlight some items in the proposed budget to provide a bit more context. The opening of our new middle high school and the technology infusion that came with it created new opportunities to improve the district technology at all of our schools. New Chromebook laptop and iPad carts for grades six through nine, along with one-to-one Chromebooks for grades ten through twelve, allowed us to redeploy existing devices from the old L H S to the primary and elementary schools. And just some numbers to put that in perspective, in fiscal year 2016, the student-to-device ratio at the primary school was five point three to one, so five point three students for every device to use. It's now two point four to one. The ratio at Turkey Hill then middle school was four to one, it's now one point three to one. And the student-to-device ratio at the old Middleburg High was three point seven five to one. At elementary here, it's now one point two to one. Overall, the district has gone from a student-to-device ratio of four point two to one to one point four to one. It's a huge increase in the number of devices over the past couple of years. Some of these improvements are also due to generous donations from individuals and organizations such as the P T O. For instance, last year, they donated five thousand dollars to the middle, to the elementary school for devices as well. This past school year was also our first year managing a one-to-one deployment here in the middle high school for grades ten through twelve. We distributed over three hundred and fifty devices individually to each student over the course of just a couple of days with minimal interruption to class time. When collecting devices back from graduating seniors, we had anticipated some level of refurbishment or at least cleaning. But in almost all cases, we found that the devices were well cared for, excuse me, well cared for, and in condition, ready to be deployed to the tenth grade class. We did have a few mishaps, mostly covered by insurance. But overall, I think the first year of one-to-one was extremely successful. Are there any questions to this point on my update? So I'll move on to the recommended budget, my proposed budget for F Y nineteen. Most of the lines in my F Y nineteen budget request remain unchanged, or changed very little. However, there are two lines I'd like to highlight just to provide a little context. First is the top line, Administrative Technology Contracted Services. In my original submission, you might see a discrepancy because there's two different budgets here. Pearson Education accounted for about a ten thousand dollar increase in this line. I realized I made a mistake in that, and I reduced that line by that ten thousand dollars. And now this line is only about a hundred dollars more than it was last year. So there really is no significant change.
Oh, so it's forty-eight?
It's forty-nine. Forty-eight, nine, forty-nine.
So that's the very first slide, correct?
Yes.
Forty-eight, nine, forty-nine.
Yes, under Administrative Technology Contract. And I did want to discuss one new item in this budget line, which is Archive Social. We just actually talked about it recently. With the increased use of social media by teachers and administrators, we can no longer rely on the social media sites themselves to archive our content in such a way that meets state requirements. Archive Social is a company that specializes in archiving social media posts. They archive Twitter, Facebook, YouTube, any major social media player. The town also uses social media. I manage the town technology as well. So we're gonna split this cost between the town and the schools. The schools obviously use quite a bit more. So I think the split we're gonna do this year is thirty-five hundred by the schools and thirteen hundred by the town. And we can revisit that next year when we have a little better idea of what kind of volume each site does. Any questions on that stuff?
Where's the, yeah, we don't have that.
I don't see that. You may not have the full detail of the budget.
Oh, okay.
There's some backup sheets.
Okay, all right. No, that's fine. I was like, oh.
Trying to figure out where the fit is. Under, yeah, it's under Technology Administrative Technology Contracted Services. A lot of us just talked about it.
Oh, it's part of that. All right, thank you.
Last thing I want to talk about, the computers purchase and lease. It's the, I believe, second to the last line.
It's highlighted in purple.
Yes. I'll get to the reason for that. I broke that out, and I'll explain it. It's a major change from prior years. And the reason for that is twofold. First, prior to F Y eighteen, most large hardware purchases fell into the capital improvement plan and not in the operating budget. Each year, I would submit requests, sometimes varying ten to twenty thousand dollars depending on needs and requests from each school. So last year, the Capital Planning Committee came to me and told me they decided to put these requests in my operating budget, both on the town and school side. So in F Y seventeen, the middle high school project brought hundreds of new computers to the district. And that actually delayed our need to make any big purchases last year because of all the redeployments I discussed earlier. So this year, our need to regularly replace outdated equipment is caught back up to.
are working on how to extend the life of as many devices as long as possible and yet keep things rolling along well. So, Mr. Maladridos is right now working on very complex spreadsheets for us to show what this replacement plan looks like, to help us really talk about the sustainability of this and how to do the timing around keeping our already identified rotations in place. For example, teachers' work laptops get replaced every four years. We do a school every year, so those laptops are refreshed on a four-year, every four-year basis. So, Mr. Maladridos is working diligently on that, and that will further inform my recommendation about a month from now in terms of what we're moving forward in terms of the final. Mr. Spadafino and the high school faculty, as well as many of the students, have, for about a year now, lobbied hard for a nine-through-12 implementation as opposed to a 10-through-12. Have we determined the three-year rotation is still what we'd look at for the Chromebooks?
If we went to nine-through-12, we would do it at a four-year rotation.
It would be a four-year rotation.
Yes. The prices are slightly different just because if we keep them for four years, I would probably choose a slightly higher-end model just to give it a little more horsepower to last through that timeframe.
Long-term.
If we do a three-year rotation, in other words, going down to seventh grade, we could do some lower-end devices because we would be out of the solution after three years.
So, those are the various replacement models that he's working through right now.
And there are some projections. I'm not sure if you've got all the backup on this.
Oh, we don't have them printed out. They receive them digitally.
Okay.
And I know you sent it out. Refreshed one today that I will send out tonight.
Yes. The only change on that is that first line that I discussed, going down by $1,000.
Right. Oh, okay. But all the backup, we sent the Excel files out to you so you could see each one of those tabs, but we did not print all of those out. There's quite a few pages.
Yeah. The last page is a projected one-to-one cost. It shows both scenarios, seven-through-12 and nine-through-12, and costs for those going on five years, so.
No, we haven't built in the rest of the replacements with the mobiles, our carts in that.
And that takes that into account because we've basically stopped buying carts for all those grades.
And replacing, sixth grade would still have carts?
Sixth grade would have, yeah. I think they have two carts now. We could actually probably move one down to three for them.
So, sixth grade would stay on carts and it would just be seventh through 12? So, wouldn't it be the entire middle school?
Right. And we received a communication recently from DESI talking about some potential funds that we might be able to access for Turkey Hill Elementary School because their analysis seemed to indicate that perhaps we could benefit from some additional devices over there. And so, we just received that and will be looking at that grant to find out.
Yes, I probably have to move on to that. I hadn't had time to flush that.
Right. Yeah. But, so the state acknowledging that based upon the data that we've given them, and we know that in order to do the assessment last year, we needed to take carts from this building to Turkey Hill. And that was even with the generous donation, not only of the PTO, but also that anonymous donor that gave an entire, I think 30, it was a mobile lab with 30 or 35 devices. But we did need to take carts down from here.
Because Turkey Hill still does not have enough for their grade level to take the MCAS?
No. We need to address that this year. We're working on a solution to that at this time. That's why we're interested in seeing what this proposed grant funding might be available from the state. But we need to find a solution for that before the MCAS comes, obviously. And I think that's one of the middle school concerns, too, in terms of the number of carts is during MCAS assessment time, there's no devices available. Maybe, Mr. Maladridos, you can talk about some of how the devices need to be configured for MCAS.
Their restrictions of testing, they can't have any internet access. They can't have any auto-correct in Microsoft Word. There's very specific requirements around these tests. So, we have to put the Chromebooks into what's called kiosk mode. It basically turns them into very dumb machines and they're pretty much unused.
Can't they use an app at the bottom where that just opens and the only way then you can get to the internet is to shut down your app and get the internet back up? And then, you would have locked yourself out of the test and would need a test administrator to get you back in, which would then see that you now have gone into the internet?
I'm not sure if that's possible, to be honest, but the requirements are very strict, and if the student can access the internet during the test, it's probable. Whether they have locked themselves out in the test or not, that may actually violate the testing requirements.
Because there are some tests that, the WIDA screener that the ELL department uses, when you go into that, you use an app at the bottom of the Chromebook?
Yes. WIDA has still that.
Right. And then, you can't go anywhere else unless you've shut down this Chromebook. I couldn't get anywhere else if I wanted to on the Chromebook. So, there might be another way. Just throwing that out there.
Okay. I will definitely look into it. I don't think it's the case because we've looked into this extensively at this point because of the burden it puts on teachers not being able to use those carts.
I know, and it's very time-consuming for you guys, though, to have to turn this all into that kiosk and then turn it all back off.
That's actually not, it's easier than it used to be, especially with Chromebooks. Chromebooks make it easier. It's not a huge burden, but it is obviously a small burden. But I think having someone there to, you know, monitor and get kids back into the test if they break out of the test using an app, that would kind of, I'm not sure if that would be a help or a hindrance either, so.
So, you can do that fairly quickly, but you don't do it every day.
No, not that.
You know, you wouldn't do it during the assessment period, really.
It takes it offline for that entire period of time.
Yeah, for that entire time.
Which means no one can use it for anything.
Right. Their testing cards into the testing.
Yeah. And that could be managed within a one-on-one environment. The students would just be required to turn in their one-on, their laptops if that were the environment that we were working in for that period of time.
Yes. We can actually manage them. We could just switch their devices into that mode while they're off campus or it doesn't even matter. We can make those changes anytime.
So, the challenges.
Before the testing, we could turn out that as one-to-one device into a testing device.
The challenges with regard to the access to technology during the assessment period are not easily resolved by any of these scenarios, except a whole bunch more devices that might be able to be utilized that aren't being utilized for the assessment period. So, there's really no easy or inexpensive way through that dilemma. And a one-on-one doesn't resolve that.
It doesn't, no.
Or does it? Because if you have just one class under assessment, then all the other classes have their devices.
That's true. It would ease it a bit. That one class would have basically break devices while they're in the testing period.
Where with our current level at the middle school, when we do assessment, all devices are being used for each grade level. And there are no more classes remaining for the other grade level at any time.
Okay.
Sorry, I needed to walk through that.
Yes, I need to.
So, we only have six carts here.
Right. I'm trying to understand if we're looking at, are we, are you making a recommendation about one of these? Are we making a decision about one of these?
No. No. We're just, that's what we're saying. We need to, this is all about sustainability, and we worked hard around this for the first one-on-one, for the 10-through-12, to get to the sustainability. So, we didn't really need to dig into this and have a plan because it does nobody any good for us to bring in a bunch of new devices, but three or four years from now, not be able to replace them. That doesn't really solve the problem at all. So, more to come on that, but here's what it looks like in terms of the initial costs to do that.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maladridos. Mr. Lobster. He's got the longest.
I know, really.
Three lines, too.
You know, next time, you'll start with the longest. That'll make you.
Good evening. So, I'm just going to talk about generally about what we're experiencing with this budget and some of the factors that are driving it. So, with a new school coming online, we've got one year's worth of data that, so we're starting to flush out the historical operating costs of the building. And so, we had that one-year FY '17, although there are some outliers that were happening in FY '17 that influenced our costs in FY '17. So, and things that are happening this year that are additional would happen in FY '17. So, specifically, we had some costs associated with the old Lunenburg High School as we wrapped things up that hit into FY '18, specifically around water use and sewer use as the old building was still up and still being in service prior to its demolition. And then, and so, there's some costs of those run up in FY '17. And then, this year, of course, we're getting things that we didn't have last year, such as the athletic, all the athletic fields online, all the sports lighting online. So, there's a few things that are influencing this budget that we didn't really collect historical data on FY '17. That being said, you know, we're continuing to refine this and I think we're getting close to what the true, you know, long-term costs should be year after year as we get better and better, more accurate data. So, on this budget, you know, it's an overall reduction of $10,776 in the proposal, and there are a couple of major things that happened that I would like to highlight. There's about eight items that I think I want to call your attention to on this spreadsheet. So, the very first one would be is the under heating of buildings, the natural gas heating charges. If you look at our FY '17 costs, you know, we expended $84,516, which, you know, from FY '16 is a substantial reduction, and that obviously reflects the new building coming online, the old high school being demolished. In the FY '19, so I'm projecting a reduction down to $102,655, and I would say that potentially could, our actual expenditure could be lower, so I am carrying a 10% contingency in that line, which is around $9,332. So, that represents, you know, some protection against particularly cold weather in FY '19. But that is in there, so, you know, we can, I think we're going to, we'll continue to see where that shakes out over time, but I think we're getting close to where it truly is going to be. The second one I would like to talk about is electricity. So, in FY '17, we didn't really get any of the big projects online that we knew were going to cut our costs, which were the net meter agreements, power purchasing agreements. There were two of those, and we had the rooftop solar that was being installed in this building. And so, those had some effects on costs last year, but like the solar for this building didn't really come online until June. So, we didn't really see a lot of savings on that. So, we're also showing that as projected downward to $188,000, and, you know, potentially that might go lower. I'm carrying a 5% contingency in that line, which is $8,954. That's one that, once again, we need to kind of see the systems operate because they do link together. Our demand charges on our electric bill are tied to our peak demand during the month, but with the solar on the roof, that should influence that. To how much is hard to say and when exactly will be that peak? I kind of think that, you know, it should probably be during the, during the school day, roughly around 9:00 in the morning when the kitchen's in full service. All the lights are probably on, most of the devices are running, all the ventilation is running. That's when I believe it will be. And that will, we'll be getting that data over time. You know, the other, the other time when we start pushing a lot of electricity is when we have three sports fields, all the sports lighting on at the same time. A little bit of two, the two possible, but I kind of suspect it's going to be the morning. The solar could potentially influence that. At 9:00 in the morning, you just start to generate electricity, so it could be starting to work on, on reducing that demand to a certain level. So, we won't really have that information until we get through to next year, but we know it should be lower and we'll have, I would say, a much better data point next year at this time. The third one I want to talk about was water consumption. Once again, that's another reduction, taking it down to 21,200, and that was based upon looking at what we projected in this year's budget was based upon three athle- In the FY19, so I'm projecting a reduction down to $102,655. And I would say that potentially could, our actual expenditure could be lower. So I am carrying a 10% contingency in that line, which is around $9,332. So that represents, you know, some, some protection against particularly cold weather in FY19. But that is in there, so, you know, we can, I think we're going to, we'll continue to see where that shakes out over time. But I think we're getting close to where it truly is going to be right now. The second one I would like to talk about is electricity. So in FY17, we, we didn't really get any of the big projects online that we knew were going to cut our costs, which were the net meter agreements, power purchasing agreements, there were two of those. And we had the rooftop solar that was being installed in this building. So those, those had some effects on costs last year, but like the solar for this building didn't really come online until June. So we didn't really see a lot of savings on that. So we're also showing that projected downward to $188,000. And, you know, potentially that might go, go lower. I'm carrying a 5% contingency in that line, which is $8,954. That's one that, once again, we, we need to kind of see the systems operate because they do link together. Our demand charges on our electric bill are tied to our peak demand during the month. But with the solar on the roof, that should influence that, to how much it's hard to say and when exactly will be that peak. I kind of think that, you know, it should probably be during the, during the school day, roughly around nine o'clock in the morning when the kitchen's in full service. All the lights are probably on, most of the devices are running, all the ventilation is running. That's when I believe it will be. And that will, we'll be getting that data over time. You know, the other, the other time when we start pushing a lot of electricity is when we have three sports fields, all the sports lighting on at the same time. A little bit of two, the two possible, but I kind of suspect it's going to be the morning. The solar could potentially influence that. At nine o'clock in the morning, you just start to generate electricity, so it could be starting to work on, on reducing that demand to a certain level. So, so we won't really have that information until we get through the next year. But we know it should be lower and we'll have, I would say, a much better data point next year at this time. The third one I wanted to talk about was water consumption. Once again, that's another reduction, taking that down to $21,200. And that was based upon looking at what we projected in this year's budget was based upon three athletic fields being online. Of course, they are online. We had water restrictions this year, we were running a new irrigation system. And so coming through that, I think we're good, we have a surplus in this year's budget because I think we're going to use about $10,000 for irrigation for all three fields, and we projected that $18,000. So that's why you're seeing that reduction of $8,450, is I think that, you know, that we're over this year, we have surplus this year in that budget line. And with the water restriction and the new irrigation system, we just didn't use as much water and didn't need to. So that's another projected reduction. The next one I wanted to talk about was maintenance of grounds, contracted services. So a couple of things on that. The major piece on that is we're, we are looking at pulling the contracted grounds care for fields out of the operating budget and shifting it into facilities use funding. With the idea that the funds that were, will be received from Lunenburg Youth Soccer for use of athletic fields. They're going to be on the grass field and that's where they want to be. They have two payments that they will make to the, to the school district. And so we think those ought to go into the school facilities use and be used directly for the care of the field, so. And then the other, so that's roughly around $16,000, $17,000. And then the other part was that when we actually bid the work for the three fields, it came in, so almost $10,000 to what we projected. So there were some additional savings there, so that's why we reduced that, recommend we reduce that $1,800. The fifth one I want to talk about just is maintenance of building contracts. So that's a $2,000 increase. And, you know, one of the things we're experiencing in, you know, in the operation of this building is just is that there are many, many systems that are very, very complicated and all linked together. You know, particularly with things like having elevators that are linked with fire alarm systems into building controls. All of these connections, you know, have potential to have some very expensive repairs. So while I'm not projecting a large increase, it's just something I'm very attuned to. We have seen a few repairs this year that were relatively on the expensive side. They weren't necessarily just here either, the middle school, high school. We had one at Turkey Hill that was almost $4,000 for a stair lift. So there can be some very expensive repairs. And so I look at that more of just hedging, hedging bets that, you know, we're going to see, you know, some expensive repairs. Our, the general philosophy I have on the contracted services is that the contracted services are there to do one of a couple of different things. Either one, to, to bring the expertise that we don't have in-house with our own maintenance personnel, to work on those things that we have no business working on, such as elevators and fire alarm systems. And then secondly is occasionally it will be, you know, to, to ease a time crunch. If our maintenance folks are fully engaged with something and we need to get something done, that might be a time when we call the contract labor. But for the most part, the overall philosophy is to try to keep the amount of contract labor down and use our own maintenance personnel to the maximum extent we can as efficiently as possible. The second one I want to talk about was emergency expenditures. Once again, this is one of those areas that, you know, we're never going to have to use it, occasionally we do use it. And we haven't used it extensively to its full extent too many times. But occasionally you will find that we will get a really expensive repair. The most expensive repair, I think, that I've experienced over the last 15 years was when the Placeos Elementary School lost its power feed from the street. Over February weekend, we had to have power restored to the building. And that was, I think, nearly $10,000, $12,000. Some of it was, well, I think there wasn't, I don't think too much was covered by the insurance. I think we pretty much covered all of it. But anyway, so I recommend that we increase what we have in the emergency expenditures by an additional $2,500. Have that at $7,500. Seventh thing I want to talk about is new equipment. New equipment is, the things that were projected for FY19 were two things. One, an additional utility trailer for the maintenance team. That will allow us to be able to move either one of our tractors to another side like a primary school. You know, I always have this vision of, you know, of a breakdown of a tractor and we need to get another heavy piece of equipment, such as a snow thrower, snow tractor, down to the primary school and not driving it down Mass Avenue. So, so I think this is just, and for less than $2,000, it will give us the ability to move equipment around and to do it safely and give us that flexibility that if we needed something or we need two pieces of equipment, we could get them both there to do what needs to be done. And then the last one I wanted to talk about was the capital improvement line. This is, this is a kind of a major change and I just wanted to really focus in on that. So capital improvement, you know, showing that at $60,000. So there's a variety of things in here. Most noteworthy is, this is where we put in the $40,000 turf field replacement payment. So we're reflecting it in here and that is new. And then beyond that, and beyond that, I had four other items that I was carrying in capital improvement and I'll brief those in order. Some of you will be familiar with. The second one was going to be for the primary school would be a shade structure. It would be $5,000 for a shade structure, would then be installed by school maintenance personnel. And get us a shade structure down there for those folks that need that. The third item I included was some site furnishings for the primary school. And namely, that was going to be some picnic tables, some heavy duty picnic tables on, that are similar to what we brought for Lunenburg Middle High School. Out there, that ones that are outlawed, the cafeteria is kind of what I had in mind. The fourth item was the shade structure for Turkey Hill Elementary School, once again, another $5,000. Also ought to be installed by school maintenance personnel. And then finally, the fifth one would be site furnishings for Turkey Hill Elementary School. And that would be, once again, more picnic tables of the same variety that we're talking about for the primary school that are here. And also some benches for the playground, right now the playground there doesn't have anything.
Yeah.
So we kind of need that, just for the parents, the parents that live with kids who play outside.
There's like one.
We have a set of old bleachers, but we kind of like to try and move that to a location where those could be better used than on the playground. So those are, so those are the, you know, that's the items that I wanted to brief. Once again, I think this is a budget that continues to evolve. And, you know, having the historical data helps us kind of get, make sure that we've got this thing right. And so I think it has the potential to go lower, but I think this is a very conservative budget nonetheless.
So that $40,000 turf field payment isn't actual money that's sitting there for capital. It's going to be used for the turf payment, right? It's gone?
Right.
It's just there sitting.
We've been showing that before in the athletic budget. I think we used to carry like 25 there. The 40K, given how the, the funds from WICER are flowing. Where the Bengals are making a payment directly to the town hall against that bomb. That's how we set up their agreement to do it that way. But that's not the way license agreement is. And so with those funds coming into that facilities account and being spent then on the contracted maintenance, which is the mowing every week as well as fertilization. It makes sense to have the money that's going out in the same, under the same category of Mr. Lobster's budget. Rather than have the 40K over athletics where it's, the money coming in is coming in here. So it just seemed function-wise to be the appropriate line to put that payment. So as well for DESA County.
Okay, so we keep the money from LIF, though?
Yes.
But we send our money out?
This 40K, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we'll make the 40K. This is the line that we'll transfer to the town 40K of funds for, to make that payment every year. And then the other 20K is related to the shade structures.
The capital.
We weren't listening, Mrs. Dale's.
I know, I appreciate it, I wrote it all down, very excited.
I was just going to look, I was looking to see, because you were the one that had to want, like, at the other schools.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm excited because I think that those, I mean, the picnic tables are fantastic, but I'm really excited about the shade structure, especially at the primary school.
I'd also like to give you a quick update on capital improvements that were funded out of FY17. So we had two projects that we funded out of budget. Camera project for Turkey Hill Elementary School and a camera and door access system for Lunenburg Primary School. Those projects are continuing along, they're about, I would say, 75 to 80% complete. We're still waiting for the vendor to finish the install of the door access system at Lunenburg Primary School. Then we'll need to do load software on several computers and then do training with staff. We expect that project will wrap up here in December. And I don't have an exact date, but we're kind of expecting that sometime within the next week or so, we'll have a contractor back on site to get that door access system installed.
What is the timeframe for the software and the training for the staff?
We haven't selected dates, but I would expect that we'll probably be early, early to mid-December. Now, the door access system is the same software that is the camera system, it's all coming together. And so I don't expect that we'll see any of that training to place until all the installation is complete.
Do you have any questions?
No.
No.
Very thorough, and the spreadsheets were very thorough. Easy to understand.
Yeah. On that note, for the committee, would you prefer to have that entire packet printed out? Would you like to have that available going forward with the other budget or having it electronically?
I prefer it. It's one thing to have it there, but you want to have it here.
Right.
So I would prefer it. Then also a ID map, then music, and all the integrations, my notes that way.
Sure.
From a faculty standpoint, I would.
So I, some folks like to work off their electronics, other folks a hard copy in hand. I, you know, I tend to be more of a hard copy person myself.
But so. If you've got it, if you watch that, good luck going through electronically to find it. You know, you've got, you've got to think about what were the dates on that, what were, where it's easier to follow through.
So I'm happy to provide that. If you don't need it, you know, I won't provide. If you would like a hard copy, then I'll, I'll make sure you have a hard copy. So I hear at least one. Two?
I'll be able to follow through on my device.
Okay.
Is it just?
Yes, I want it, I want it.
That's three.
Four hard copies, okay.
Okay, I'm the odd man now.
We're going to, we're going to aim to aim for that.
I tried to ask, did it be like Jen and I?
I'm trying.
I was trying to.
I know, it's like.
The bathroom. Yeah, I know, yeah, that's what I need to do. I need to do that.
Oh, we're on to public commenting. Do we have a comment from the public?
Great job. No, really.
Any public comments from the rest of the board? No? Okay. Do we have any reports?
No. Well, Athletic Advisory, we're meeting on the 27th at 7:00 PM in this room.
Okay. Any school comments?
High school met this yesterday. Couple of things that were mentioned, next Wednesday, the 22nd of November, they'll be having some honor awards for the students. Honor roll will be celebrated with the students. Abigail Adams Awards will be presented and we have a merit scholar that will be awarded at that time as well. So that'll be an exciting time for the students. Also, at the high school, they're beginning the accreditation process. There've been some changes where now it's a three-year process. The first year, which is the one that we're starting to enter, is a period of self-reflection where the high school will think about what is working well for them, areas that they're going to need to improve on. So there are some changes to how the accreditation process works, but it looks like it's more friendly to the population, to the staff, that they can really take ownership of what they're doing well and what they feel they need to make improvements on. So that's the year that they're in for that.
Turkey Hill, I had a meeting yesterday, but I was unable to attend. But Mrs. Okerman, were you there?
No, I was.
You were not able to attend, you said?
Speaking of course, last night.
Okay. Well, I'll have to get the notes from someone else. And there were no others?
Middle school didn't, not me.
Okay.
And the primary is the 29th?
29th, okay. And the Policy Subcommittee did meet?
PTO.
Oh, PTO, sorry, PTO met, that's right.
PTO met on Monday, they received updates from the principals. The members that were there really appreciate the principals coming out and being able to speak face-to-face and giving some updates on what's going on at the different campuses. At the primary school, I'd like to highlight the veterans program. They were able to have 50 veterans and had a really beautiful program with music. So they highlighted that. At the elementary school, they were talking about the Girls on the Run program that's happening at this time. At the middle school, the sixth graders are getting to participate. In Fridays in December, they're going to have taekwondo on Fridays in the gym. So parents can let their students participate in taekwondo. Be a nice time for those guys. At the high school, like I mentioned, the academic achievement rally. Oh, and also Barnes &amp; Nobles is going on right now. If you are not able to make it, you can use Barnes &amp; Nobles code 12232872 and do your online purchases at barnsn.com/bookfairs. And that is until November 21st. So you can use that code, that website and still participate and have, support the PTO and get some great books for the holidays perhaps.
Everything, everything in the store.
Yeah, everything.
Including the cheesecakes. I think they do.
I think they ship them. They're frozen too, they probably do ship them.
I think they do.
They might. So the next meeting for the PTO is December 11th and we really look forward to more members coming out and being at the PTO meetings.
That's it for me.
That's it for you, okay, sorry. The Policy Subcommittee, we met last Thursday, correct?
We did.
We did. And we just started working on policies, on the policies that we talked about. We don't have anything to present to you because we didn't do anything in hard writing or update anything yet. Now, we have another meeting on the 27th. Down the hall from here. Same day as Athletic Advisory.
I'll stop any time.
Same Monday, yeah.
And while this did meet, just really quickly, the entire meeting was focused on a presentation with the possibility of looking at a collaborative effort within the town to bring in a referral service regarding mental health.
Oh, okay.
So there were lots of community members and members from other entities within town.
We had several school counselors, nurses. There was a very large group. What was the final count for attendance?
I don't remember the exact final count, I'm not sure everybody.
Very healthy, it was 20.
But I was just going to say, my guess is 20 people. It was a great.
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah, it was great. Do we have any topics for future discussion? If we do, let's just leave it up to the budget season.
Yeah.
Topics for future discussion. Topics for future discussion.
Anyway.
Okay, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn at 8:51 PM.
I don't think we're going to make it to-
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
I don't think we're going to make it to Barnes &amp; Noble.